You signed all those papers for Doug Wilson?
Mm-hmm.
It was not your turn.
Signed my life away.
Yeah.
I did that on the last one, too, where I was the secretary. I had to sign all of them, I think.
It's a big one.
How he is.
Those are terms.
And you've done it for as many years as he has. It's probably just a walk in the park.
Forty-plus years.
Yeah.
He is, he is very good at mentioning about certain topics.
Yeah. According to Larry's pocket screen, so we can get started. I stand for the pledge allegiance under moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Mr. Ketchum, I'll turn it over to you for our vision statement.
Madam President, thank you very much. Members of the board, welcome.
Welcome to this beautiful Wednesday in Bixwell, Indiana. We begin every board meeting with our board star, our why, and that is, together with our community, BCIC is committed to providing an engaging and relevant learning environment based on a strong foundation of academic knowledge, transferable skills, and real-world experiences. Batesville logs embody confidence, empathy, and resiliency to ensure 21st century success. So, thank you for that, Madam President. And with that, ma'am, we'll roll right through our agenda. The first and central agenda item for your consideration is a consideration of minutes from our prior board meeting on September 17th. Would that, Madam President, seek a motion to present those minutes as presented?
Does anyone have any questions on the minutes?
No.
Can I seek a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Larry. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Thank you, Blaine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll continue on the agenda. The next item for your consideration is the payroll journals and registered claims. You do have six additional pages in front of you, they are Mr. Navi, that were not in the board packet, but we'll ask to clean up any outstanding invoices. Just draw your attention to page one of six, some of our larger bills, obviously Batesville Water and Gas, $15,000. And then, as we scroll through on page three of six, obviously, we have some of our bus routes are contracted routes. So, we're paying those contracted route drivers. And then, finally, you know, on page four of six, $10,000 for our full lunch program. Obviously, we have to purchase all those consumable items. Give you a moment to look through those. Have to answer any questions you have on that or the prior board packet.
So, is the big board, the big, for $33,854 from here, it now goes, is that for the new roof or the stuff?
For, a lot of it is mechanical equipment after the middle school.
Okay.
There's some, over, over fall break, we're going to be replacing some, some of the HVAC equipment on the original part of the building. And that material is what resulted.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I seek a motion to approve the payroll journal?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Blaine. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Larry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The next item on our agenda is a list of personnel. I did want to draw your attention yesterday afternoon, there were three additions to the initial board packet that Laura Colson out, specifically the resignation of Dwight Creed, Cosoto Media Staff, Austin Grove's eSports sponsor, and Megan Spreckleson, National Junior Honor Society sponsor. So, those were new to the initial board packet. I just want to make sure you saw those changes. With that, I'll seek a motion to approve that list of personnel as presented.
Oh, what is eSports?
Great question. So, in the middle school, they're actually thinking gaming. There are, it's a gaming concept where a sponsor, they play educational games, for lack of a better term. It was a big push from the Indiana Association School Principals, maybe two or three years ago. Mr. Drouse being a member of that board, it brought eSports. They're actually, believe it or not, Madam President, there are scholarships for students to attend, specifically Ball State, and be on eSports teams. So, think of it as gaming.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
I will bring this up, just with the personnel additions. I've talked with Paul about this, and Stephanie and I met about this. But Larry, and also for Jeremy and Sean, who aren't here, I know I've had a number of parents over the past year reach out to me about questions about administrators serving on coaching staffs. Then I would like to ask our board members to get it, to contemplate their opinions on that going forward. And mostly, it's from a parent perspective, the report is, is they have a question or concerns about the reporting mechanisms and who they're supposed to go to when we have administrators who serve on coaching staffs, is the concern. And candidly speaking, I think that, you know, Paul's on our list here today, and I know Andy Allen has been a basketball coach. I think our administrators are some of our most qualified folks to work with students. And some of our more, most influential folks that work with students and student athletes. And so, I think they're, they're a positive influence on our teams as coaches. But again, from a, from a parent perspective, I think that's something we kind of need to contemplate and somewhat formulate some opinions on as far as administrators serving on, on coaching staffs and being involved in extracurricular activities, just from, from a parent perspective. And so, again, not, not asking for an opinion today, but just something to think about going forward. I don't know if it's been a policy that we've not had administrators serving in these roles historically, or if that's ever been a written policy. But again, something that, from, from parents and, and of student athletes, that have brought that up to me. Again, over the past year, it's, it's been raised. And so, again, just something to contemplate and think about as we go forward beyond today, so.
I have the same opinion as you, Blaine, so I'm in your house on that one.
Okay. That's just my, my comment and, and on the personnel things, but anyhow.
Anything else? Can I seek a motion to approve the personnel?
I'll make that motion to approve the personnel.
Thank you, Larry. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Blaine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll continue down our agenda item. The next item for your consideration, our travel request. You have a list of travel requests in front of you, and I'll seek a motion to approve it as presented. Have to answer any questions you can.
Any questions?
I just have a procedural question.
Please.
With my wife being on the list, but us only having three board members here, if I were to abstain from this, it would carry just on the votes of two members, is that correct? Because it's a majority of the quorum.
It's still the majority of the quorum, so your abstention would still allow that motion to pass.
Okay, that's my assumption. Just want to make sure.
Larry, you make a motion?
Yes, I will make the motion.
Thank you, Larry. Can I second it?
Yeah, I'll second it. And I'll vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And I will abstain for the record.
And Mrs. DeMoneira wasn't reimbursed, I'll let you deal with that.
Yeah. I'm sure she'll, she'll figure it out one way or the other.
Thank you very much. We'll continue down the agenda. The next item for your consideration is the actual budget adoption. We spent an arduous amount of time in September's meeting to go over all the numbers. This is our final opportunity to ask any questions. If you have no questions, I'll seek a motion to adopt that budget as presented. Again, just for transparency sake, once this board approves a budget, it still has to go to the DLGF, where it's formally approved. So, seek a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Is there any questions on the budget, come anyone?
I think we had a prior discussion on it.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I think you understand.
Can I seek a motion to approve the 2026 budget?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Blaine. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Larry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll continue on. We'll transition to our financial report. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tim Hunter.
Thanks, Mr. Ketchum.
Sure.
On the screen, we have the financial report for the month ending September 30th. Fairly straightforward month. In, in the education fund, we had our basic grant payment, along with any other miscellaneous revenue of a little over $1.5 million versus expenses of just over $1.4 million. So, that balance actually climbed by over $100,000 to end the month at $2,76,656. We had just small miscellaneous revenue into the debt service fund, so that, and no expenses. We won't have any expenses out of there until December. So, that balance climbed a little bit, at a little over $1.43 million. The operations fund, our second largest fund, based on expenses, we had about $93,000 of receipts and $473,000 of expenses. So, that balance dropped, but still remains at $3,669,000 and change. So, we, we will expect in November, sometimes November, definitely by December, we will get our second half draw. So, the balance in the operations fund is, is holding strong and ahead of where we were last year. The rainy day fund, no activity. Our overall fund balance across those four funds is $7,185,123 at the end of September. And that actually is more than half a million dollars above where we were last year at this point. We're, we're about $200,000 higher in the education fund balance. And then, the rest in the operations fund, we're, we're carrying a larger balance right now.
Any questions from Mr. Hunter to send? Mr. Merkel.
Do we, we still move money into a mutual fund or something where we get a higher interest rate?
Mr. Navi, you'll expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, we put the, last year, we put the $5 million in, and we haven't had to touch that account, so it's, it's sitting there accruing interest every month.
So, you haven't had to pull anything out?
Not yet.
All right.
Mr. Navi, I don't want to throw you in the bus. You, you had shared some investment totals this year. Are you comfortable sharing the totals right now?
Yes, as of September 30th, we have about $210,000 of interest income for the year. I just round numbers, but.
Again, just with that perspective, that, that, it's a lot of money, but it's, it's impactful for us to basically find $200,000. As you know, our education fund, for us, a good year's, we grow $100,000. So, I'm going to credit Mr. Navi for his foresight to invest our money in an obviously very stable fund to grow that interest rate. So, that, that's good news to share with this board.
So, we leave the interest there and let it, let it compound?
Yes. I don't withdraw anything unless we need it.
Okay, great.
Any other additional questions? Okay. Madam President, we'll transition to a portion of this meeting called Blue already, and I'll do my best to set it up for Dr. Jackie Huber. Many of you may or may not know, in 2011, state Indiana created a statute that all teachers had to go through an evaluation process. And it was initially called the RISE rubric. It was a very arduous, heavy lift. It had great intentions. Every, every educator had to be observed a minimum number of times. There was a lot of energy from administrators. And everyone was rated on a scale from one to four. Those numbers had categories of highly effective, effective, needs improvement, and improvement necessary. The intent was good, to create some accountability in classrooms. It pushed administrators into classrooms. That was a good thing. But after a decade of that process, it is, it is really, there's very little return on investment on that process anymore. So, in the most recent Indiana General Assembly, they kind of, I don't want to say abolished, but they got rid of that format, and they just asked schools to come up with local teacher evaluation plans. I'm going to give our administrative team a lot of credit, and I, I can't underscore the amount of work that went into this. A lot of schools are status quo. They're still using that, I'll call, archaic format. Our team, as they always do, kind of took the bull by the horns and said, "Let's create something that really focused growth and aligned with our Blue Already master plan." So, what you have in your board packet is, is a compilation of work from the administrators. What Dr. Huber did so very well was to organize all of our thoughts and pieces of this puzzle and put it into today's plan. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Huber. Huber, Larry, do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Thank you, Mr. Ketchum. As Mr. Ketchum mentioned, I was tasked with, probably in the spring, just taking the conversations from the admin meetings, as well as the resources. They started to brainstorm what they wanted that evaluation process to look like. So, I was tasked with taking the different components of it and then presenting it in this document that you see in your packet. So, this document was created not only for the teachers to have a reference as they go back through the new, this new part of their teacher growth plan, but it also was a resource for the principals, just to kind of guide the process. So, we introduced, the principals actually introduced it into pieces. If you look at page seven, the first part of the plan was involving their, them developing their own grow goal. So, on page seven, and I'm sure that you are probably somewhat familiar with the GROW model. And it's just a model of discussion as we have conversations with anything, with our teams, with administrators, talk to teachers, just how they are evaluating whatever the process is. So, the growth plan actually is kind of the guide for the first component, which is the growth goal. So, late August, early September, the principals presented page eight through page 13 to the teachers. And they asked the teachers to review this process. Their task was to create their own goal. And as Mr. Ketchum mentioned, the teachers, it's, it was a different thought as far as the evaluation goes, because the teachers were asked to come up with their own goal. It was personal. It was to help them professionally. The steps that began on page eight, the teachers were given two different options for self-reflection. So, maybe they're not really sure what they want that growth goal to be. So, they were given options to just kind of think about, reflect on, to guide where they want that goal. They were also given some examples. So, in the document that you have, one of the pages just links to different examples to help them write goals. So, some of the teachers maybe were a little challenged or a little, like, writing a goal, they were a little intimidated. So, we wanted to make the process easy for them. The other piece on page eight, it was just the steps. The teachers clipped up a link, they created a sheet, they put their GROW goal, which is very similar to the screenshot here, and then they shared this with their administrators. So, all of the administrators have a direct link to this sheet in which they have their goal. There are three components to that sheet. Not only is the goal identified, but there's an observation form, and it follows that GROW model. So, that is the two pieces. And I believe maybe that was shared with you at the last board meeting, just the process, the experience of the teachers with the GROW. So, the second component is going to be introduced to the teachers after fall break, which would be observations. So, the GROW goal was the first component. So, beginning on page 14 in the, in your resource, you will see information about the observation. So, the observation is actually the teachers going in the classroom. And I worked with the administrative team as they reviewed the old RISE evaluation form in which they reviewed what they used to look for when they guided observations in the classroom, and they streamlined it. They, there are four essential indicators, which you will see on page 14 and 15. I developed with the administrators the Google form. So, when, when administrator goes in the classroom, they sit down, it's simplified form. And this process is all communicated to the teachers, and it's, that is outlined on page 14 and 15. The teachers have an opportunity to reflect. The administrators will get, like, a form, a PDF generated, so then to provide the teachers feedbacks. So, it's continuous, go to the classroom, reflect, meet with the, with the principal. So, it's something that's ongoing. And that is part of the observation and reflection, which is part of this growth plan. The other components of this plan, this resource that you see, are other important aspects of that growth plan as defined through the work that I did with the administrators. One piece is leadership points, and it's opportunities that teachers will participate as, as you see on the list on page 16 and 17. They participate as curriculum mapping, they're a mentor teacher, they're a summer school teacher. But opportunities for teachers to participate or in various school activities. Page 18 is the core professionalism tracker. This is something that was component of the old evaluation system. And all teachers are set to be proficient in each of those six categories. And you'll see on page 18, the core professionalism tracker, is that they contribute positively to the culture, they collaborate, they maintain accurate records. So, it's, it's basic professionalism. And then, if an administrator has issues with any of those components, they will communicate that with the principal, or, I'm sorry, with the teacher. So, it's understood, all of the teachers, these are important components, and they are proficient. If the teacher, in any instance, is not proficient, the administrator would make you aware of that. So, they would bring that to the teacher's attention. The resource also includes roles responsibilities on page 20 and 21. You'll see just an overview. It's kind of the Q and A. We did a lot of brainstorming at our leadership summit this summer, just to kind of be proactive. What kind of questions might the teachers have with regards to this plan? And then, finally, it ends with appendix, and the appendix is something that we will continue to update and review and grow. So, that is the teacher growth plan resource.
What, and what I really love about it is it truly is a targeted dialogue now between administrator and teacher. About where do you want to grow professionally? After the observation occurs, that teacher is then given first the opportunity to respond to the observation. How did it go? Where'd you get stuck? What would you do differently? Because a lot of times, when we want to put a classroom to walk right in the middle of something, and it's not fair to the teacher or the administrator. For example, if you run a evaluated basketball game, you walk in at halftime, you don't see any basketball, you, you think, well, this is a bad basketball, right? That's not a fair observation of that basketball game. Same concept, what would I, what would I, what was I supposed to see if I was in your classroom? And again, it just creates that target. It goes away from compliance, gotcha, to how do I really help you grow on the mutually agreed upon goal that we've already set for each other? That, oh, by the way, aligned with our master plan. So, that's what I'm most excited about. It's, it's very hard to use a template in first grade and in chemistry class, and, and that's what we've done for 13 years. It's very hard to use a template for a teacher of special needs in the modern room and a physics teacher. And, and now, each teacher has the opportunity to say, "Well, this is where I'd like to grow professionally." And, and the goal is the administrator gives you the coaching feedback to do that, and then say, "What barriers do you have? What resources can I provide you?" And all of a sudden, now, it says, saying, "Well, I'm a three out of four. I, I was able to grow professionally." So, again, that's, it's a lot of information, but conceptually, I wanted you to have an opportunity to understand it. We do, it will be an action item later. If this board approves this teacher growth plan, it's what I will submit to the state. That meets the statutory requirement that we have to, we have to submit a teacher observation plan. So, hit pause and just enlist for any questions. And Dr. Huber, thank you. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify, so Paul, there may be additional changes for this. This is, we have to get something submitted across the line to, and then it can continue to be morphed from here.
Absolutely. We learned nothing else from boarding yoga coaches, that evolution occurs on processes and formats. And that was a talking point to teachers. This is year one. Based on our feedback, year two could look a little different, and it probably should look a little different. What happened to the RISE rubric? It was the same rubric for 13 years, didn't evolve, right? It became archaic pretty quick. There will be different iterations of this growth plan, but this is our best attempt in year one.
Are we up against a deadline to get this submitted or approve this today?
We're up against a deadline before submitting it to DOE. That, that's the deadline, yes. So, again, you know, we've intentionally rolled this out to teachers in bits and pieces. There's a quote, "Slow is smooth, and smooth is fast," is that just saying, "Hey, we're changing everything." We've been having actual conversations last spring about where we're at. The feedback, Mr. Timonera, has been amazing from teachers, because they feel like they're part of the process now. They are going to set the goals and have that conversation with the administrator.
And, and that's what my question was, where I was going was, has this been discussed with the teachers or the VEA or things of that nature? And just to get their input on things. Just tell me if I'm wrong, but this sounds like it's a far more involved process for teachers from an evaluation standpoint than what historically has been under the RISE rubric?
I don't, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's accurate, and here's why, because the, the compliance, that there was 13 competencies, and you had to do seven of these and four of those. I think it's a lot less cumbersome. I think you kind of own the process more than ever before.
And the plan was that all the administrators shared this draft of this plan, I believe, at their September staff meetings. So, I know that they have seen the various components, but this, as a, as a resource, it was shared with each of the buildings. It's like a lead at our September staff meeting.
Was that after our board meeting?
Uh, it could not. Every staff meeting is different based on the building. But, but again, we live in a world of no surprises. The teachers knew when they left here last year, there's going to be a new model. And part of the, one of the benefits of Mrs. Essex serving as a team of students is her teacher perspective. She was, she was part of building this this summer, and she brought a lot of value to feedback about perspective. But again, just in my conversation with VEA and teachers, I think there's appreciation. Administration took an attempt to do something different and better. It would have been very easy to keep the same model, and it, and honestly, that would have been a waste of a lot of people's time.
I have a couple of questions. So, each, each teacher will have a personal goal, where they're going to improve themselves?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Could you maybe give me a, maybe a generic example of that?
So, the, the guide, a part of the guide for creating that goal, it did have to, to build on one of the strands, because we did want to tie, did want to tie in our Blue Already initiative. So, the strands are teaching, learning, culture, systems and structures, our school and community partnerships. So, most of the teachers, I would say, probably focused it on teaching and learning. And some even went as far as they wanted to build the, let's say, an elementary classroom. They wanted to build in the attributes, the Blue Already attributes each month. So, their goal might be to develop a lesson, a monthly lesson that builds the, the attributes. So, that would be an, could be an example of our goal.
Uh, is there a classroom goal?
Not necessarily. Typically, there's a building focus. So, for instance, at the primary school, their focus is reading and literacy. Like, that's kind of their overarching, overarching focus. But the goal, the admin team felt that this particular goal should be something that they're focusing on personally. So, it is, I, I believe it's very personalized.
So, the Indiana academic experience are the Indiana academic experience. We have the obligation, teachers, right? But the goal is, the goal shouldn't just, "I'm going to teach Indiana academic standards." When you go to the rubric, it's this, "How do I consistently communicate the use of learning targets with my students in learning appropriate language?" So, the goal for the teacher could be, "How do I take my corporate Indiana academic standards? And how do I consistently communicate those learning targets with my students?" That's under strand one, which is teaching and learning.
Okay.
And that goes under our pillar of knowledge, right? When every student will leave Batesville High School with the appropriate knowledge and skills. So, before, the old model is I walk in and observe Mr. Merkel. I would have a big rubric that says, "Mr. Merkel consistently uses learning targets with students." And I'm in there for 30 minutes. I may never see you do that, because we didn't establish that mutual goal, right?
Right.
And I'm going to move on, because I'm scripting things, and I'm checking 74 boxes in 45 minutes. And that's not a, that's an act, that's what was happening before. And then, we give that report back to the teacher and be like, "What, what are you really talking about, Mr. Ketchum?"
My last question was on page 16. It says, "Conduct nine hours of parent-teacher meetings outside the contract day." Now, are they compensated for that time for parent-teachers?
So, that is why it's called a leadership point, going above and beyond. So, if you do things outside the contractual day, you will earn what are called leadership points. Those leadership points have been agreed upon between teachers and administrators. So, that is one component of, of leadership. But here's the truth, not every teacher has that opportunity, or not every teacher can do that. That's why there's multiple leadership points. The best leadership point you get is 97% attendance, you've got to come to work. That's the one we really stress to teachers. That's leadership point. You come to work every day, leadership point.
So, in this case here, do they kind of document all of these leadership points themselves?
Yes.
Yeah, and how, how do you, how do you, you know, how do you recognize a teacher who works every middle school basketball game session, right? That's out by the contractual. So, there's probably going to be a leadership point that fits there. We want to show our appreciation to that teacher.
Okay. I know from a business standpoint, we always had to establish our own goals and follow them. I know from a business standpoint, we always had to establish our own goals and follow
You know, the business professional process was actually kind of shocked that we were going to struggle setting goals. As educators, we've never been formally trained as how do you, how do you set goals? How do you meet those goals on a professional growth? If you're selling caskets in Batesville Casket, that's your number one priority. What's your goal? Did you meet your goal? And your boss reviewed that goal with you.
Can a teacher, one of the goals be to improve their education?
Well, based on the master contract, there's a financial incentive. You earn additional education, you move on the salary schedule, you change columns.
But could that be, could that fit into this group model?
Uh, for example, and I'm kind of stretching, but if you wanted to become a dual credit teacher through ID tech, you wouldn't teach government and be able to award ID tech credit. You could have a conversation with your high school principal about my goal for this school year is to earn my educational payment and then dot, 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 connect it back to students so that one hundred percent of the seniors at Batesville High School can earn a government credit through ID tech.
Okay.
That's a very targeted goal. That's, that's a goal has a big return on investment.
Sure. Okay. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot to cover here and learn for us.
For sure. I think Mr. Timonera said best of this, this plan will evolve based on feedback and utilization.
So if this gets approved, will this be used immediately for evaluations for this fall for teachers?
Yes. Observations and total growth, yes.
And when do, when is the approval date?
That's why it's here today for your formal approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Laker, we're going to have you take the floor right now for a Bulldog Ready update and our Ford and GL coaches.
Good afternoon, board, and thank you for allowing me the few minutes here to talk about our master plan in year two. But last time I spoke with you all, I talked about our Bulldog Ready calendar, and I had that year two begins kind of in, in September. Year two really began for us on Monday. And when we go back, you'll see I didn't create anything new for this school board today because this is our master plan. And if you read the top paragraph there, it talks about how the Bulldog Ready master plan is a living written document created in collaboration with a four, seven, zero, six community. That's also really important to me is that the group that sat with our Ford and GL coaches on Monday didn't recreate anything. We pulled up our master plan, we looked at our year two, well, first we looked at our year one checklists and action steps and saw what is not what we would call institutionalized. And so if it's institutionalized, it's now in place. An example of that would be our bulldog, I mean, our rolling starts. That's a, a product of planning for years now that is now how we, how we do business at Batesville Community School Corporation. So anything in year one that then it became institutionalized, we rolled that over and made sure that it's still a point of impact for, for year two. So we went through our year one and year two master plan implementation guide for each tactic team and really came up then with what we call our sixty-day sprints. And so we had each tactic team lead go through those action items for year one and year two and create kind of a, a big three. Similar to our, our teachers, we talked about that, that role that Jackie just spoke to. We, we did the same thing with our, with our tactic teams. What are our big three? What are the big three things that we want to accomplish? What do we want to accomplish between now and Christmas? What do we want to accomplish the first couple of weeks before spring break? And then what do we want to accomplish between spring break and the end? Kind of like three big goals by the end of, of the year. Obviously, there are smaller, minor details in there as well. But just for you all, you know, back when, when I gave you the master plan template, it's more just a reminder that we have these seven tactics who are working to kind of create processes and systems through the corporation and then the community. And so we spent half the morning or half the day dedicated to the tactic plans. And then the afternoon with our Ford and GL coaches, we spent actually talking about a partnership handbook. As you have seen through the last couple of years of how much more involved we are with our partnerships, we want to make sure that there is an intentional structure that it's not always coming through me. And I know, again, we've talked about that pinch points. We want to make sure that if, as we distribute our leadership downwards to grade level leads, community coaches, other C of corporation employees, how do we make sure we're all speaking the same language? And that's what that partnership handbook will really do. It's really an internal document, how we communicate externally to our, our business partners. So those are a couple of examples of what we did the last couple of days with our Ford and GL coaches. But I wanted to talk about as well our tactics here.
And Kyle, can I piggyback on that?
Yeah, yeah.
I want to stress the importance of laying that foundational piece in the community is that people will change, but the process should stay in place. So the handbook, I hope Kyle's here for seventy years. But when Kyle retired or leave, that process needs to be in place for the next individual and also for our community partners. So again, I think that's the, the beauty of this process is this is not a Kyle or Paul. This is how we do business as a community for our students and for our community. So that again, just I want to stress the importance of the work that's being done is laying a foundation for a long time.
Similar to the plan that you just saw with the growth, the growth plan there is the same way, you know, that's a document that we're going to create. This, this document here is going to lay out that, that plan. And what we did was, you know, we're moving into year two now, right? And so we have year two objectives and year two action items that we want to make sure we're hitting these, these points through the, the tactics. And what we did is we, we first looked at who has made up of our tactic teams. And so for instance, I'll start with tactic team three, which is systems and structures. That's led by Andy Allen, right? And we all know that, that Andy will no longer be with Batesville come January. So how are we, how do we talk about that transition point? Who, who takes on that initiative? And so Paul, myself, Jackie and others brainstormed kind of prior to that meeting about what does the transition look like for some of these tactics as we go into year two to keep the movement going? So Brad Stoneking was tapping the shoulder from our, our primary school principal to, you know, he's a systems guy. He, he loves his spreadsheets, he loves his, his data. How do we take that and build these systems and structures to what Paul just spoke to? That's, right now, sometimes I'm just doing things to get them done. That's not good business of how, of how we need to do it. So we need to get back to that roots of strand two from our Ford and GL model, looking at those systems and structures and getting them in writing so that way if, again, if I leave or I also need help in some of those processes, that we're all speaking that same language. So that was the goal of today. Again, I just took the, kind of, you'll see the page numbers go all over the place here in the master plan. If you do want to see the, the details of that, you guys should have a spiral copy of our master plan. And if not, I can get you another copy as well. Just speaking to, again, a little overview of what each tactic is doing and how we reformatted those teams. This happened on Monday. So when I, when I get formally all typed up, you know, I've been with my Ford and GL coaches the last two days, I will make sure that you guys see that, that kind of re rejuvenated teams where it fits on what the year two action items are. I think that was important for us to just take a step back. We didn't create anything new. We just want to make sure, do we have the right people in the right places to make the right movement for these tactics? Is that fair?
Yeah, thank God, so that, you know, believing in better continuous improvement. And Blaine, you asked a question about does this, does this year one, is that forever? For, for example, let me, never since tactic teams are groups of people who pulled a master plan off the pages and put it in motion. And I use this now GL timer, and there's a church festival. Someone's in charge of fried chicken, someone's in charge of trashment. These tactic teams are responsible for different portions of the master plan. Specifically, the tactic team seven, which I was the chair last year, it's called building and bulldog community. And in the master plan, there are different portions. How do we make all kids feel like they're part of a community? Because when kids have a sense of belonging, we all know there's better outcome for those kids. Part of this bulldog community is how do we onboard new staff members? So we've transitioned from students to adults during our Ford and GL coaching, which now changes the team. Todd doesn't know this, but he's going to be on tactic team seven now. He just found out on the live stream. Along with some business partners who are experts in HR, right? So how does this team evolve? So we talk about building a community, it's not just students, it's also professionals. So again, there, there will, will never be done with this work. This work will consistently be evolving and improving.
One question I have is, year one, are there any leftover items not completed?
A lot.
There are plenty, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. When we sit down as a, when we sat down as a community and envisioned this three-year plan, like, we were ambitious at times. And, you know, we, we think, we reflect back on what we've, like, where we've came in the last year, and it's, it's pretty impressive. But it's also, to your point, Mr. Merkel, like, there are some things that we didn't get to. And so those things rolled over to year two. Yep. As a lot of the master plan was written, it was, a lot of it was year one heavy to try to get these things up and launched. And so we will have some grace with, with those tactic teams, but also the ability to catch up. And it's important to make sure that those are still priorities from our master plan and they're not getting overlooked by just saying, well, year ones aren't with, sorry, those, those, that's not going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
And Kyle, I want to commend your team and, and all the tactic teams on the work because I know to Larry's question, right? Are we done with everything? Are we not? I have been a part of a number of conversations in the last month to where people not affiliated with the school system that are just, you know, leaders of nonprofits or, or community members who have brought up that, you know, everybody talk complaints, get, get off my lawn type attitude, you know, when, when you hit the age of about thirty-five and so on and so forth. And so, you know, students, kids today, kids today, kids today. But I know that, that, that conversation has started to turn and say, well, the school system is starting to inject students into the community to learn these things and learn these skills and be a part of nonprofits and introduce them to these, these areas of the community that, that they were kind of born into, that they don't necessarily, other communities don't grasp or understand, right? You and I are close enough in age that we woke up and just by the grace of God, we were put into a community like Batesville that had all these things already built for us that we never had to see our parents really build or construct. It was just something that happened within the community. And so I know that, that conversation, that students are now learning that and how those things come to reality is starting to circulate in the community up organically, not anything with school personnel having those conversations. So it's starting to percolate through the system here, so.
Yeah. Mr. Timonera, you bring up a great point about how special Batesville is. And we had a chance to speak at Hendrix County the other day, I know, a huge community, a group, and that we're just blown away by the community outpouring our openness to just host our students because that's a big point, like, we can't do it all in the classroom and, and, but, but can we get our experts in the community to help out with that, that process? And so that's what this, that's exactly what this does. And one point I didn't make earlier was in these tactic teams, we do have a community member on each tactic team as well to continue that, that community-driven approach to it. So those are all parts of, of the master plan and our implementation.
I think ultimately, Mr. Timonera, it, it should be really fuzzy where school is and where it isn't, right? There's so much learning occurs outside of our four walls. We have the obligation to prepare students to maximize those opportunities. And as silly as it sounds, community feedback was our work-based learning students should have name tags with a picture on it. We, we, it's, you're right, right? So we take that feedback and we make names, and I have one hundred and seventy-five kids now at Batesville with name tags, and they should shake your hand, look in the eye. And all the things we want our students to have. Again, the master plan was developed, you're part of that, was develop our community. This is what we want our kids to have in this Batesville High School. So this is a kudos to Mr. Laker.
It's really kudos to our team because our tactic teams especially, this is one case where, you know, I can help direct it. I'll touch base with all the tactic teams every sixty days. But, you know, Jackie is a tactic team lead for tactic two, who's, who's in charge of our professional development. And so as we speak to our teaming training that we've done on September second, twenty-second, where does next year go and, and what does next year look like? We sat down and talked about January fifth already. So it's just, you're always, you're always looking at that next step and even the next year ahead to just continue to make all this.
So you and Jackie, you kind of have to mesh things together?
Yeah, you know, she, she's the, the department chair of that, right? If you want to think about it, that, that chairman. But I have to oversee all of them so that way, what we did is even on, on Monday, was there was a lot of cross ties to some of the other tactics. And for instance, Jackie has one on there that talks about our staff industry tours. And we did those last year. Those were on her tactic team, but like my group, my tactic team really is the one who brought that forward. So this is a living, breathing document. We're taking that from tactic two and moving into tactic one. Because I, we have to know, see those gaps and see those overlaps to make sure the right group has the right content. When our community wrote this plan, they didn't necessarily know who the right, you know, which one was going to go in.
Yeah, I, I do want to say this, this is truly transformational. We are one of the few schools, not just in Indiana, but across the nation, who are truly embarking on this journey. And it's not an easy lift, and there's a lot of touch points. There's a lot of great people in this corporation, we're making this happen. The amount of progress we made in the last year is amazing, and it makes me excited. And I think three years from now, when, when your children are in high school, what, what opportunities our kids will have from this community? I can't say enough good things about our teachers and our administrators and everybody making this happen. We, we've had so many teachers rise in leadership roles. We've taken the business model, reallocated financial resources, right? Like, how, how, how can this teacher do something different, right? So we're so thankful for our community partners, and we're really dedicated to transform this process for kids. I don't want, I don't want the board to.
Just for you, are you guys then like talking to people that graduated out of the program? I know it's very different, right? Like, I just had one that graduated and I have one who didn't graduate through it, but how the skills helped them later on that one, whether it's in college or professional life, because I think that's the feedback that probably going to give you the most input on how the program going forward because they're going to know what skills are transferable for, for future use. So, I mean, it would just be something that I, I know you can't get because it's, you're very good, right? But. Tactic team three does exactly that. And when we have our community members, they want that quantitative data. And, you know, like, what we want to do is make sure that we provide them the opportunity, right? And we want to definitely follow that. But that's where the community comes in. When, when Batesville kids are applying for jobs out in the community, are you seeing the seven attributes that we pushed in Bulldog Ready? Are you seeing that they're coming with certifications on their resumes? Like, those are the things that we can really track. But I think it's going to come more from the, the business side of, because that's what we're trying to do this for. It's a workforce development for the four, seven, zero, zero, six, right? And, you know, we, we went into, Sean's not here today, Mr. Townsley, we went into the Morel Company yesterday with our freshmen, and Trey Peters, one of our VHS grads, is working there. And he just takes our freshmen kind of under his wings and is just showing them that, that process. But it's cool for us to see, you know, going back to our why, seventy-two percent of our kids went off to college in our two thousand nineteen cohort, and only seventy-five percent of them pursued to year two. Trey Peters is one of those examples. Through Bulldog Ready, through, through your, through your kids as well graduating, did they have a clear pathway when they left? You know, we always use that career tree. Are they going right into the workforce? Are they going to a two-year or getting some certifications before they go off to the workforce? Or are they going to those professional careers, those four-year opportunities? But we're providing them opportunities on all three of those levels for them to make that informed decision so we don't have twenty-five percent of our college-going kids not return to year two. That's, that's the ultimate goal of that. But that is a, a data point that we, we need to make. And what we're going to do the next couple of years is just track even our juniors and seniors of how many kids are undecided when they, when they say what they're going to do. Because that's what we're trying to, like, letting the kids try on these careers through Bulldog Ready and so that they have a clearer picture of what it is their next step is.
That's a great question. I think I'll piggyback on, Mr. Wyler, is you went to high school here, Kyle, Blaine, great high school, right? I think when, when we started Ford and GL process transformational learning, there was a starting point, freshman sophomore year. So some of our recent graduates had great experience, but they really have to go through that transformational process. We're, we're one of the few schools in the country to kind of do a K-12. Most of the time, it's just high school focus. So, but your point, well taken, like, we, we need that data to glean like what's working well for that feedback.
I agree. I mean, knowing what we're doing in K to 12, we have to find out how successful we are when they leave. And somehow track that. That's hard.
I think it's really, you know, it's kind of scary to look like. My kids are 20, 20, 36 and 20, 35 graduates. You know, it seems like a long ways away. In 10 years, you know, when they graduate, what does their graduation class look like compared to 2025 or be 2005, right?
I think the data we lean on and Kyle touched on is we were proud to say like 70% of Batesville's residents go to college. Proud of that. But then we also say, well, about 40% of the students come home after year one because they weren't sure what they want to do in college. That's a big expense to pay for, right? So the goal is when you go to college, ultimately, you want to be employed. We want everybody to be employed. Instead of saying you're going to college, I want to be a chemical engineer. Well, this is the track you're going to take to be employees and chemical engineer. So again, philosophy, you should be exposed to that, not just your freshman year. K through eight, there should be those opportunities to be exposed to careers, interests, passions and relevance. So again, just we will, it would probably take three days of conversation to really unpack what's going on in our school corporation. I just want you to have snippets here and there. That was a lot of information, Madam President. I'm sorry. So we're excited about it and we're proud of our work. What makes you work with us?
I think this is going to be the longest meeting in history.
I know. I'm sure. So I have a problem. Madam President, please.
You're still getting it done.
No Mike Ballmer for you.
I know. I haven't broke that yet. Okay, so this is the point where we open it up for patron comments. You're invited to share your topics, comments, opinions. We just ask that you keep it school-related and you do not mention an employee or a student.
Yes, I did. Sure. Yeah, so Chris Wyler and Blaine touched a little bit on the subject of why I'm here. But I think everybody knows me. If you don't, I had two daughters come through here already. Felt like they represented this school pretty well. I have a son right now. I feel like he does a pretty good job representing our school. I'm one to challenge people, always am, but in a respectful manner. And usually, most investors of our kids are school. So, you know, what I'd say is that I recently sent an email to some of our administrators concerning our administrators' coaching. And it's not a reflection upon the administrators themselves. It's more about the fact that it's concerned me for years because I had a daughter that played basketball at Batesville. The basketball coach was the AD. And obviously, that is hard when you're trying to have conversations about coaching. Going to the AD is also the coach or having to go up the chain of command and really understanding that chain of command. I know we have a similar situation in our basketball program. I know we have a similar situation in our football program. Obviously, some people, including myself, didn't know the whole football situation this year until the Lawrenceburg game when the manager came down to coach. And to be fair, like, it's not on the roster. So if we go look at the roster of the football program, there is no coach listed there. It's not in the board minutes. I checked those before. So it starts to create this perception of transparents, right? And so like, I'm not necessarily concerned on whether individual programs have challenges. We have athletic director, we have school board, we have administrators that do that. They should talk to parents, they should talk to others in the community and see whether or not any program, whether it's athletic or not athletic, is a problem. But what I am concerned about is just that, do we have the proper structure in place, right? If I have an issue with a, I put it here to make sure I get it right. If I have an issue that arises, where can I get it? Coach report to the AD, the AD reports to the principal, the principal reports to the superintendent, but all three of those people are on staffs. It becomes a very hard conversation, even here in front of you guys, like in front of, you know, the superintendent, right? And I'm okay with that. I'm okay with having difficult conversations because I feel growth comes from difficult conversations. But, you know, I just think that it really becomes a problem. And whether it's a perception or a reality, it creates a place where there is perception for conflict of interest. There's also, you know, the idea that we put in here as well that can the person really act impartial or deny that they were part of any discipline problem if they're part of the staff, right? Not saying they are, but it becomes very hard because there are a lot of conversations that go on between coaching staffs and teachers and others. So I just want to raise that up. I think that we need to have dialogue about it. I would say also that this is no reflection, but it is a challenge to you guys is that the opinion of this school board is, is that I can come here and present my case. I can't have dialogue, okay? But I can present it. And the only way for me to have a conversation with anybody is to have individual conversations with each individual school board member, which then creates possibilities of different conversations, no consistency. So as a parent, whether it's I'm a band member or whether I'm a community member, it becomes very hard to engage in dialogue. And look, I know people come here and cause problems. I get it, okay? But there's also people here like me who are fine with just having a conversation and giving our viewpoints. And I think everybody here understands my viewpoint on this particular subject, right? So I think it's a structural problem. You know, it's not a personal problem. It's not personal. I live it every day in the business world. I know it's hard to find coaches. I know it's a difficult task, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a process in place that whether perceived or reality, there's a conflict of interest. So that's kind of my challenge to this board is that please take it under review, communicate out what you're doing, let people know, like, what the decision was, engage them. Because I think it's just going to lead to problems. It led to problems for me three years ago, being very transparent. And I wasn't going to sit and let it happen again because I don't think it's good for anybody in the world. Other than that, I appreciate the time. Happy to talk with anybody here. I know, I know we're not supposed to name, but I've talked to Paul and I've talked to others, right? So that's okay, right? And you made different viewpoints than me, but I think it's good. People can express viewpoints because that's where growth comes from. So thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We'll take everything under consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Wyler. We'll continue on. The next action item for your consideration is sick bank usage form. Again, this, you do not see these very often. So just for a history lesson, there is a definition of a sick bank where certified and classified employees can donate one of their sick days to the bank. And if they exhaust or need to access additional sick days, there's a committee to do that. We didn't really have an easy-to-find sick bank usage form, which is, which is good. That means we don't utilize the sick bank a lot. But this is a recommendation to a teacher conversation about approving this form so they can put it on the website. So that if an employee needs to access a sick bank, they can easily find that form. So with that, I see a recommendation to approve the sick bank form as a.
Does anybody have any questions about the sick bank?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Larry. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I will second, but briefly on that, we're going to kind of cross talk here with Dr. Huber's presentation on the grow model. Is this possibly, I don't know how often this is utilized, but is this possibly something we can include as far as a leadership point that the teachers willing to donate their personal sick days to the bank as far as a team effort? Is that something that can be factored in? Is this something for consideration?
Yeah, no, great question. So the quick and down dirty thing, the contract is contractual. So that, that's why there's a monetary attachment to salary benefits.
I'm sure. I will second your motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam President and members of the board. The next action item for your approval is teacher evaluation grow model. You heard Mrs. Dr. Huber talk about that? Take a motion to approve that model and present with the caveat, Mr. Timonera, that it will probably look differently than this issue.
I will, I will make the motion to approve the grow model, but, but I would appreciate a report back after this is utilized, both from administrative and from the teacher perspective, whether it's somebody from the BEA to report back directly from them as their thoughts on it, one way, shape or form, as to how it goes through the implementation process. Just because it's, it's new, it's personalized, personally developed for our school corporations. Just hearing that from the teacher would provide me some comfort as a.
With the school board. Absolute honorable request. It is, it is unusual, again, right? When you have to evaluate employees, just want to think like, we'll do our best. And the idea is not to evaluate, the idea is to grow a profession. So that's.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Larry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. The last one for consideration, this is probably the heaviest hitter. We have some parking concrete bumpers that we need to declare obsolete. I'm making decisions there. We have one time in our parking lot, we used to have a lot of concrete bumpers to stop traffic flow. We know all reviews of, there's been some inquiry from senior members about utilizing those as school, as school footwork. You can't just give it away. It has to be declared obsolete. So with that, I'll let Mr. Hunter take a little deeper dive, kind of seek a motion to approve some concrete bumpers obsolete. Mr. Hunter, anything you want to add to that?
Most of the paving work we did this summer, and especially in the school bus lot, we pull a bunch of them out and they are going to try to continue without the need for those in the future, which makes it much easier to clean the scum and the dirt. But they, they do degrade over time from the weather. So there's a shelf life. We can't store them just in the garbage. We, in the past, items like that, if we can't use them, we check with the city or the parks department and other places. But I do know that there have been churches and other groups that have reached out to some of our maintenance people because right now they're stacked up on the corner of the bus lot near the innovation center. We had plans to use some of those around the district over fall break. After that, then we'll probably look to, to try to find another home for them. We would have been sending them down to recycle probably a license or something.
Any other questions on that? Can I get a motion to approve the obsolete?
I'll make a motion to approve the obsolete.
Thank you, Larry.